Okay. Good evening, everyone. Right now, I am joined by current Broward County Commissioner Dale Holness, and welcome to the Adams Brothers Podcast. I am Wayne Adams, one half of the Adams Brothers Podcast. My brother Darryl could not make it today, and I'm glad to have County Commissioner, as I said, Dale Holness here. He's running for the US Congress in Congressional 20, District 20, and welcome County Commissioner.
Thank you so much, Wayne, for having me on. I'm grateful that you have this kind of informative program where you can educate the public as to policies and as to what candidates have done, what they plan to do. Look forward to having a robust conversation with you this afternoon.
Okay. And, you know, you could just, for those who don't know, County Commissioner, can you tell us a little bit about yourself very briefly?
Thank you so much. Well, I'm an immigrant, born in Jamaica, arrived here at seventeen years old, finished Plantation High School. I'm gonna date myself now, class of seventy-five, did my driver's at a Dillon High School. I've been engaged in this community pretty much, as soon as I arrived, in every which way possible. I attended Broward College, and while I was there, was a freshman senator on the central campus out in Davie. Back then, black folks was a little bit scared of being in Davie after dark, right? The Klan had marched in seventy-seven, so it was, it wasn't fun for some. But I was a brave soul. I actually went out there for an event one evening, and it was only one other sister that was out there. The next day, I asked where the other folks, where were you? They say, "Man, you crazy? It's Davie. You don't come here after dark." But so much have changed in Broward County. From being a minority population, blacks are now approaching one-third of the population. We are in a position to be empowered, to ensure that we have a seat at the table and participate fully in governance and economic opportunity and output within this county of ours.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanna jump right into it, County Commissioner Holness, and just ask you, how have your years on the county commission prepared you to run for Congress?
So I tell you this, last year, I was your county mayor during the height of COVID-19. I was able to bring leaders from across the county together to fight this COVID-19, this very dangerous virus. I had a weekly meeting with all the mayors across Broward County. We brought bill consensus. At the start of it, people were going in different direction. One wanted to close, one wanted to stay home, one wanted to do this one. But I was able to bring them together to build consensus. It was very tough times, and we're approaching some hard times again here with this new variant of COVID-19. But we took some steps that were considered somewhat drastic by having a stay-at-home policy put in place, safer home, we call it. But it helped us to stem the tide of the rise of the spread of the virus. And in great deal, we did it because we wanted to make sure that people wouldn't go to the hospital and not find a bed. Even if you didn't have COVID, we were approaching the point where the capacity for hospital beds was about to run out. We had to do something drastic. Some folks are upset that we did, but we saved lives as a result of it. And we were able to reduce the spread, reduce the number of people in the hospital, and at the same time, found a balance to ensure that our economy didn't die. We made allowances for business to be open. We made education a major part of what we needed to do to let folks understand the importance of wearing masks, socially distancing, and basically staying home if they felt ill. So that they protect the workplace, they protect their coworkers, their family, and their friends, and the economy. Because if everyone's sick, we can't produce. We are all gonna be in real deep trouble if we didn't do that. And on top of that, our port pretty much shut down. We had ships out at sea, the Rotterdam and the Zam Dam that were stranded, and no one wanted to take them in. But listen, on a good day, we would be welcoming those folks here to spend their money with us. Now, they're not ill and something's wrong, and we're gonna turn them out to sea to die? That doesn't seem kind at all. That doesn't seem humane. So we were able to find a way to bring these passages into Port Everglades safely and protect the local community, because we got them straight on buses and to the aircraft. Many were waiting for them to go, so they went straight home. They didn't spread the virus locally. Those who were ill, we admitted them in the hospital and took care of them. And when they were better, we sent them home. And I can tell you this, it created a tremendous amount of goodwill for Broward County. I have gotten ambassadors call and letters from Canada, from England, from France, from the Netherlands and elsewhere, because their nationals were on these ships that would have finally docked in Port Everglades. So that means a lot to us and our economy going forward, because that kind of goodwill is what we need to continue to grow our economy to ensure that our businesses are flourishing. It is important that we understand, even today, that we're in this together. You know, Martin Luther King had a saying that I'll paraphrase, that we may all come in different boats, but we're all on this boat together now in America. And we must realize that, that it's an important thing for us to understand that we're in this together. And together, we can make America even greater than it is.
Thank you. And if elected to the US Congress, County Commissioner, what are you, do you think that we can, what do you think the Democrats have to do to get the voters out to the midterms next year? Because it seems like after a general election, it's hard to get the voters back to come back for the midterms, and they are so important, because I think right now the Democrats only control, I think it's like six, over by a six-seat lead, if I'm exact?
Yes.
And what would you do as the congressman for this District 22? Try to galvanize the vote back, so, at least so the Democrats can retain the US Congress again?
So I tell you that Congressional District 20 is pretty much a safe Democratic seat. There are only thirteen percent Republicans in it. But you use your influence in leadership, wherever you are, to better the cause of the people that you represent. And certainly, for District 20, which is largely a black district, we need to have Democrats in the US Congress. We need to have a majority in the Senate. So though the district is safe, what I would do is work also to ensure that we put in in the governor's mansion someone who's far more friendly to us. That's a critical part of what we need to do, and at the state level, in the Senate and in the House here. But at minimum, we need a governor who will better understand the needs of District 20. And to be honest with you, has tremendous amount of sway as to how, when dollars come down from the federal government, government is distributed to the local economy, whether we not, we join the Medicare care program and expand Medicare for ensuring that healthcare is available to all of our people. That's a big part of it. How the CARES dollars are spent and housing dollars. There's a tremendous amount of power that the governor have, since he's the chief executive of the state of Florida. So what would I do? Here's the first thing I would do, and I say to all of you out there that are listening, encourage everyone you know to become a registered voter. Number one. Number two, vote by mail. Request a vote by mail, and you can register the vote at registeredtovoteflorida.gov. Register tovoteflorida.gov. You can register there. So that's, let's each of us take it on ourselves to do this. The other thing that I'd say to the Democratic Party is instead of waiting until election time to put money in the community that's most, have the greatest amount of affinity for you. Blacks vote at over ninety percent Democrat. Hispanics probably at about thirty, about forty percent, fifty percent. And whites, about thirty-five percent. Make investments early in the base of your party. And what I'd say to you is this, they should send to every loyal Democrat who's a regular voter or not a voter registration application, and ask them to assist in getting someone who's not registered to vote, to vote and send it back. Now, the third-party voter registration law that was passed to suppress people from assisting others to register to vote doesn't stop you from handing a voter registration form to someone. What it says is if you're gonna help them, that person fill it out, collect it, and send it back in, then you become a third-party registrar. But if you're simply handing it to them and even giving them instructions as to how to fill it out, maybe even assisting if they are having difficulty, they send it back in themselves. You're not collecting those voter registration form. You are able to then not be in harm's way as to violating the law. So that's one thing that I'd say. The second thing is vote by mail. The Republicans wanna stop us from voting by mail, because for the first time, Democrats outnumber them in vote by mail, because it's so convenient, it's so easy. Let me say this to you, Wayne, that studies have shown that if you have a vote-by-mail ballot in your hand, you're twice as likely to vote as not to vote. It's convenient, it's easy, and you can still take it in if you're one of those folks who says, "Well, you know, it's important that I actually physically go there." I understand that, but get the ballot anyway. Take it in with you. Or leave it at home, for that matter, because you can only vote one time. All this nonsense about voter fraud and all of that is nonsense. In fact, when it has a card, guess who's done the wrong? Isn't that Democrats? Is the other guys? Okay, so they make noise, you know, they like to use subterfuge, direct you in another different direction other than what they're doing, so that, and call you out for even what they're doing, right? So that's, to me, is very important. So we wanna do that. And all of us, again, I'd encourage a party, instead of spending a whole lot of money on all these television ads that you see, especially in the last few days, every two, three, four, five minutes, every break, commercial break, there's another ad that you put on television. Let's ensure that we use that for community engagement and community building to get the vote out. That's really critical for us. So there's a lot that we must do together. And for those of you who are watching this, if you are registered as a no-party affiliate, I encourage you to become party-affiliated. Now, I'm a very strong Democrat, but party affiliation gives you more of a voice than no-party affiliation. People say, "Well, I'm no-party affiliated, so I'm independent." No! You're dependent on someone like me voting for a candidate in the primary elections that you can then vote for in the general election. And as in the case of Congressional District 20, come the general election, it's over. The primary election, where the majority is, almost seventy percent, sixty-seven percent of the voters are Democrats and only thirteen percent Republicans, whoever win the Democratic primary election is gonna win the general election, right? So become party-affiliated. And you can do that also at registeredtovoteflorida.gov. I've been very engaged in the political process for a long time. My first election was to help Andrew DeGraffin Wright, and Wayne, you're too young to even probably know who Andrew DeGraffin Wright was. He's the second black person elected in Broward County. Second only to a gentleman out of Dania, Mr. Boise Waiters. He was the first to be elected. I volunteered for that. I worked on Jesse Jackson's campaign in eighty-four, eighty-eight with Ed Phillips, my good friend up in Pompano, who served a term as a commissioner up there. We were out at Skid Row and Melody Bar and all those places where, you smile, you might even have heard of Melody Bar. It was, it was, it was a little bit not so nice sometimes. But other times, it was nice. People had a good time there. So we would go out and register vote when people were there. And then I worked on Bill Clinton's campaign, ninety-two. My office served as a call center on Al Gore's campaign, on Kerry's campaign. Obama's first full-time place to operate from in Broward County is my real estate office. We actually did a lot of work for him here. He was really stellar in his campaign approach to engage those folks who would normally not vote. He went out and registered them. He got them vote by mail, and we won that election. We have to repeat that kind of stuff in our playbook going forward.
Okay, and County Commissioner, I wanna switch gears a little bit here. With all the rest of shootings and violence going on across the country, do you think the Second Amendment should be repealed?
I gotta tell you this. You know, when the Second Amendment was put in place, the founding fathers had no clue that we would have these kind of weaponry that exists today. You know, back then, you loaded a musket, pour your gunpowder in, fire, and you gotta do it over again. It was not as lethal as we have now. We have machine guns that can do sixty rounds a minute. I mean, this is, this is crazy. What is there, even more than that? It's the weaponry we have wasn't anticipated. And I believe, had the founding fathers realized that we would have these kind of weaponry, there would be some modification done. Folks might need the right to defend themselves, and I think that's what the intent was on the part of the founding father. That's one. The second thing was to basically allow the citizenry to be in a position to defend the fledgling democracy that was created at the time from foreign invasion. Those threats don't exist anymore. So I think there should be some modification, certainly. We today need to have gun control in place, where you have people who are not sane, getting the license to buy a gun. That shouldn't happen at all. So there should be restrictions on that. There ought to be restrictions on some of these automatic weaponry that exists. We don't need, we're not at war.
And that's what I was gonna ask you about. What restrictions would you like to see put in place?
Certainly, certainly, we need to ensure that we have a proper registration system across the country with no loopholes, so that wherever you are, you have a gun, it's registered to you, it's licensed to you. We know you have that gun. And that these weapons of mass destruction, I'd call them, are out of the hands of the ordinary citizen. The bad guys are on the police, which doesn't make any sense at all, that they have more lethal weapons than the police force that is there to protect the citizenry. So there must be, at minimum, common sense gun regulation in place. And unfortunately, the state laws don't allow me to put it in at a local level. In fact, if I try to, they would be able to put me in jail and sue me and without any defense as a legislative person. The law allows for you, if you pass legislation, to be protected by having at least the defense of the entity paying for it that you represent. That's not in place there. So it is crazy that we're killing so many of our people. It doesn't make any sense at all. And then we have a situation where we have so many people in our prisons and our jails. That's another topic that we need to talk about. We are robbing ourselves of our most valuable capital, our human capital. There must be police and criminal justice reform. We ought to be investing more on the prevention side, more on civil citation side than we do now. This budget year, for Broward County's budget, five-point-eight billion is our budget. Three hundred million of it. The single largest item on the budget is our jail. Three hundred million dollars. Who we have in jail? Poor people, people who have addiction, people who have mental illness. Forty-seven percent of the people in jail in Broward County have psychotropic problems, drugs that they're taking. They have to take medicine to stay sane. Forty-seven percent. Many have addictions of all types. Many are mentally ill, as I said before, and most of them, poor. So we've gotta do something different. And I've been at the forefront of that, passing civil citation program for adults, where if you commit a minor misdemeanor, you don't have to be locked up. Unfortunately, the police departments across the county are not doing enough to utilize that program. We have juvenile civil citation in place, and here's the success rate for juveniles. Ninety percent plus of the kids who go through this program, more than ninety percent successfully complete the program. Ninety percent success rate. Three percent recidivism rate. And we saved close to forty million dollars over the past few years by putting this in place. Not that we don't hold people accountable for doing wrong, but we found a way to bring resources to those household. If a kid has some issues, what we gonna do? Lock them up because they have emotional tantrum that they push somebody around and get in a little scuffle? That doesn't make any sense. What we need to do is ensure that they go through some protocols that helps them to deal with their temper. What if there's abuse in that household? What if there's high poverty and that kid went out and stole something? How is that locking them up and us spending a hundred and sixty-one dollars a night to keep them in jail gonna make things better? How is if a woman with a couple of children shoplift, a hundred dollars, putting them in jail at a hundred and sixty-one dollars a night gonna fix that problem? So we put folks through a program with the civil citation program that allows for them to pay their dues, their debt that they owe for doing wrong, but also to ensure that we're bringing the resources necessary to help them along the way. Twenty grams of marijuana for someone to have just possession, to put them in jail, make no sense. When we know that, you know, a lot of folks, they'll take a little smoke, even former presidents will admit to that. So, you know, to lock someone up or something like that, it makes no sense at all. We need to, we need to have a serious reform of our criminal justice system, not just policing. And we ought to be investing more on the prevention side, as I talked about here, than on the other side. When we look at our education system and we're looking at third-grade level performance to determine how many prison beds we build, we ought to be looking at third-grade performance to determine how much more money we put into preventing these kids from failure, rather than looking at how we spend more money to build more jails and lose the precious capital of our people being productive and creating prosperity for themselves and for all of us.
And you mentioned, you mentioned about mental illness and you mentioned about the justice. County Commissioner, we, right now, currently, to have Congress pass the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act, and it's right now sitting at the Senate, they're trying to take things out and compromise. In that bill, do you think qualified immunity should be included in that bill? Do you think, what, what do you think they can do to, besides taking qualified immunity out, that can get that bill passed in the Senate?
Well, I tell you this, right? The unfortunate thing for us in our country is we don't train our police officers as much as we should. And here's the saddest part of this. As a society, we give someone a badge and a gun and say, "Go fix the ills of society." You are responsible to fix the poverty, the mental illness, the addiction. That's not possible. What we must do is ensure that policing becomes something broader than just locking someone up, okay? But I'll tell you this, that when a police officer abused their power, as we saw with George Floyd, that officer was cold. He was cruel. He treated George Floyd as if he wasn't a human. He must be held accountable for his act. And that will change the dynamics as to how black folks are treated. Now, listen, in Broward County, I'm one-point-nine times more likely to be stopped when I'm wearing a seatbelt because I'm black than if I was white. Almost two times more likely. That means I'm being overpoliced. That's what it really means. So those kind of things must change. Yes, we oftentimes have to negotiate, and I understand the negotiation and compromise, but I think a big part of what needs to happen also is that we must educate the public. So I think right now, there should be a huge education process going on by the leaders in our country at the presidential, at the federal level, and I'm doing that at a local level to let folks understand that the inequality, the inequity that exists in our country is robbing us of a better future. And we must utilize our police as a way to keep peace, to ensure public safety, but not to keep a certain group of people down. City Financial did some study that was released last September that said that because of the inequities that exist in our nation, we lost sixteen trillion dollars in economic output over the last twenty years. But if we were to fix these inequities that exist, we could grow economy by five trillion dollars. I utilized that to convince my colleagues to do a couple of major legislation ordinances, we call them, at the county level. One, that was to put in place the Criminal Justice and Police Oversight Review Board to look at all the policies that we have as it pertains to policing and to bring solutions to change those dynamics. There's a twenty-four-member board that will be seated shortly to look at that. I also passed the Racial Equity Task Force. That is to look at the inequities that exist within Broward County and find a way to bring policies and implement those policies to bring about change. We're already doing some of that at the county. We have a dismantling racism program, which I think is a big deal. Part of what I've done is focus on how we get, or small minority women-owned businesses to get contracts. Because if you, if you look at the people who are in our criminal justice system, you find a large percentage of them are poor. Large percentage unemployed, even before getting involved in the system. If we're able to create a prosperity track for communities that have been left out and left behind and locked out and locked up too often, we would be able to create prosperity for more people. All of us would benefit if we can grow the economy by five trillion dollars over the next five years. That's white, black, brown. Everyone would be able to do that. So the broader community needs to understand that. Because you create equity doesn't mean that you're taking from anyone. It means you're enhancing the opportunity for people to be more productive, to live a fuller life, to create prosperity for themselves, their family, and then it will benefit our community or state and our nation.
Thank you. County Commissioner, the US has spent over two trillion dollars in Afghanistan the last twenty years. Do you think the US can continue to support countries financially when we can't provide housing, medical coverage, medical coverage for the homeless and mentally ill in America? Do you think America can continue to sustain financially taking care of other countries like that? Not in war, but just countries, a lot of other poor countries. Can we continue to do that financially and take care of the people here in America?
Well, I'm gonna give you two point-of-view ones, okay? This is a different twist than the questions brings. One, we must invest more, more in our people. When you look at the most important asset we have, our people, it's our best capital to invest in. Education, healthcare, ensuring that we're training people to compete with the rest of the world is very critical for us. We can't just spend money like we did in Afghanistan. And I gotta tell you this, Wayne, when you look at the world today, we must look at it from a different lens than we did before. That lens that we looked at it before is one of control. If you look at us compared to China, Germany, and even Israel, and India, they have a different policy, a different outlook. Japan also. What they're looking to do is see how they can sell more of their goods and their services to the rest of the world. Okay? That's where we should be going. That's the kind of support mechanism we can put in place to help other countries, but help ourselves at the same time. China has this policy of a Belt and Road Initiative that basically goes out and they help countries in Africa and other places build ports, build airports, build roadways. But guess what they do with that? They say, "We're gonna lend you the money to build," let's say, for example, right here at our front door in the Bahamas, Bahama Mar, five billion dollars. But here are the conditions. One, you must use their skilled personnel. But here are the conditions. One, you must use their skilled personnel, their architects, their engineers. Two, you must buy the material from them. Three, you must use their labor force. So the money that they pledged to lend didn't leave China. It paid their own people. These countries get the benefit of having these roadways or airports, the seaports built and. Trying to get the, 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 the benefit of having their people make money. That's a different twist that I'd say we need to look at it. And I give you something else. Uh Wall Street Journal, a very well-recognized and respected uh entity. Said about three years ago that Africa is the future and America is not ready yet. I was there in Ghana in twenty twenty for a trade mission before we shut down in January, February, uh twenty twenty. And I saw the opportunities that exist. So I'm not telling you we should disengage from the world, but we must invest here first. And then look to see how when we invest overseas, it's not from a military perspective. And and the Wall Street Journal pointed that out also, that in Africa, whereas China is looking to do. Developments, we're looking to put military personnel there. That's not a productive way of spending our money at all. The people who benefit from that are those who are in the war machine making business, not the ordinary folks, okay? Uh so, so we, we've got to change our perspective quite a bit on, 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 on that issue. Now, I started a, a, an event called FITC, Florida's International Trade and Cultural Expo. It's the largest. Uh event of its kind in the Southeast United States. We actually won a presidential award for it. What we do is we engage the world on how to do business through Broward County. We help our businesses sell more of our goods and our services to the rest of the world. Uh that's what that award does. It started with Kennedy in nineteen sixty two. That's when that award first came about and we won it in twenty nineteen. Uh in twenty nineteen, we had sixty countries represented with about two thousand people from around the world. In Broward County looking to do business. We've had heads of state, former heads of state. Uh uh attend business groups from around the world, uh attend these, these events. Uh so we can get our business exposure to doing business with the rest of the world and to sell more of our goods. And our services to the rest of the world. That's the perspective that we ought to bring in terms of our foreign policy as we go forward. I can tell you that there are other countries that are, are leading us in that, in that manner. And and I know a lot of Americans don't travel much, but I, I do. Uh and I can tell you, I see it out there. I see what's going on with other countries taking space away from us that we ought to have. Uh for ourselves, because we have the, 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 the world represented here. We are the only country in the world. That have a representation of people from every corner of the earth that understand the language. Uh have contacts there, can open doors for us to sell our goods and our services to the rest of the world. No other country has that. We ought to utilize that more. Uh to, 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 to get into these marketplaces. Uh and, and take, for example, Ghana, they have iron ore there. They need investment to mine that iron ore. We can make money from that as Americans. Sending the military there is gonna help? No. Sending our business people there to help develop that and, and, and training our people to be able to go. And have the skill set, the technical skill set to, 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 to develop these plants. Uh i- is gonna be critical for us as we go forward into the future. We, we, again, we must change our perspective on that. And there's some tools that we can enhance. Uh there's, there's a program called the Goalkeep Program. Uh that if you have an American business that is looking to sell at least fifty one percent content. Of goods or services to the rest of the world, or, or embassies are can help. By using the commercial attach aid that's attached to them, set appointments with entities anywhere, any, that, that we have those commercial attach aid. Uh to uh open the door for us to go sell our goods and our services. We need to do, uh utilize that more, but we must. Understand that we invest first here at home because we are in a competitive world. We have to build. Our people first and invest in that human capital so we can outcompete the rest of the world. And China is. One that I'm very concerned for. People are scared of Russia. I'm not. Russia is broke. They can play havoc with our, with, with our stuff, uh using uh technology to hack and do that. Well, we can beat them back. We can shut them down if we want to, uh using the same methods that you. China is not doing that. China is quietly. Taken over the world without fine one shot.
And while we own foreign policy, uh County Commissioner, as a U S Congressman. What circumstances, if elected, will it take for you to vote to take this country into war?
My God, I, I, I gotta tell you. What I've seen us do in the past is, is, is engage our troops and spend our money. Without having a clear-cut pathway to what we would define as victory. How do we, what, what is it that we, we're winning? If we're attacked, certainly we ought to defend ourselves. Uh no doubt about that. But we have to have clear justification and reason. And we, we are capable to do surgical strikes. More so than long-term prolonged wars. We can go in and bombard a country and take out. Listen, we, we've got a capability to fly a, a, a bomb through a particular window in a particular house, almost any place. We can target the folks we need to without sending our troops on the ground as much. But again, it would really mean that we have to have had an attack on us uh for us to do that. And, and, and a thorough examination to make sure that whoever the perpetrator, perpetrator is. Is who we go after and not go try and take over some country.
And, and as far as our situation in Afghanistan right now with the withdrawal of the troops and uh getting other. Afghanistans that supported the uh United States, uh giving them uh information. Uh how do you think the President Joe Biden has handled that situation so far?
So debacle. We, 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 and we were set up too by Trump. Uh he, he, he basically, uh I'm gonna be kind, he's a former president. Uh he, he messed it up. You wanna talk to the Taliban? You don't have a clear pathway as to what you want from them, what you're gonna get from them. You don't have the, you don't listen to your intelligence people. To understand these folks ain't no good. They're not good people. They don't really want, want good for us. They wanna kill our people. Uh and, and but you wanna invite them here to, to, to. You know, I mean, what nonsense is that? Uh so, so, so we were set up and, and I gotta tell you, it goes further than that. When we go in, when we went in, we didn't understand clearly the people, the culture. And we went in to be the big, strong guys to, 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 to control and, and direct. We, we ought to have gone in uh with better understanding. We ought to have utilized the intelligence that we have in our human people that are here. Especially those who are loyal patriotic citizens with connection to those countries and, 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 and get them to be at the forefront of it. I, I wrote something back in, 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 in college at Broward, many, many years ago, before you probably were born, Wayne. And, and, and what I said is this, that uh Dr. Handelman was my uh political science teacher, brilliant man. Uh is this that no other country in the world can engage a loyal patriotic citizen. Uh from any part of the world that understand the culture. But what we've done is we've put old bald-headed white men. In place who don't understand clearly and they go with a, with, with, with a different mindset. Uh we ought to utilize more of the people that understand the cultures and, 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 and the nuances. That are there. Uh going into Afghanistan, we didn't understand clearly. And listen, the Russians were there and they lost. We didn't learn from that.
British, I believe, was there too.
Yes, yes, the British were there before. These guys played a long game. We, we go in and we think we're gonna just change everything like that? And, 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 and I think that we had some opportunities to engage and, and bring the Taliban in as a part of the governance. And blend it so that they would be able to work out whatever they need to work out and get out. Uh but we, we kept them out and we dealt with some corrupt folks, wealthy folks. And, and they made all the money and the rest of the people weren't getting enough money. Uh and, and we ended up with what we got. Similarly with Vietnam.
And I got, I got one last question and then I'm gonna let you make your closing statement. Uh if elected, County Commissioner, on which issue will you work with members of the other party?
On, so, so my, my opinion is, is the, my district, the district, District Twenty, the one I, I, I hope to represent. Uh the biggest concern that I see for the people there is economic disparity. And a need for criminal justice reform. And they go hand in, hand somewhat. So I, I'll tell you a piece of legislation that I, I believe I can bring that will bring. A bipartisan support. And it is to ensure that communities that have been left out, high poverty, low income communities. And then all black folks understand that. Trump won because those white folks who fit in those categories. Thought he was gonna come in and, and give him a whole lot of stuff. He did not. So they're still out there disgruntled. Uh they, they're still mad, but they're mad on his side and thinking that he could have done more and we, he would stop from doing. So, so understand those who are conscious will help with this. There's, there's already legislation that has what's called empowerment zone. I don't know if you've heard of empowerment zone. Empowerment zone allows for wealthy folks to avoid capital gains on the profit that they make. On their investments. If they invest in these opportunities on which are, which are high poverty. Uh, 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 high unemployment, mostly blighted communities, okay? Similar to CRA, but imagine this in a national scale. So what I would say to, to the other side is this, you have them in your rural communities also. And in other parts of, 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 of our country. Join with me, let's modify that legislation. Let's, let's put some new legislation in place that now requires. That if these folks are gonna invest in this community, that is a requirement. That the people in those local community get a percentage, the percentage of the jobs that are created. Right now, the legislation doesn't call for that. So these companies could go in and invest, just as with the CRA and bring everybody else from outside. Uh there's no requirement that these communities, that the businesses that are there. Be engaged for contracting opportunities from spending of these capital that will be invested in there, that ought to be there. And also. That within these communities, if there can be some folks, set up a pool, a funded, pool funded for investment where. Folks can put five hundred, a thousand, you get a, a hundred people, two hundred people at, at a thousand dollars, it's two hundred thousand. And that when the return comes back on those dollars, they pay no capital gains either. They don't pay any taxes on their property. Otherwise, what we'll have with these opportunities zone is similar to what we've seen with many CRAs. It will gentrification on steroids and these communities uh will be pushed somewhere else. Uh and still marginalized. Also, in addition to this, let's bring some more capital resources and, and technical support for these communities. So you're gonna put more money into education within these poor rural communities such as Bear Glade, Pahokee, uh South Bay that would qualify. Uh when you look at uh Rivera Beach, that would be a, a part, and it's a part of the district, Northwest Florida, Pompano Beach. Uh and, and North La, 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 all those have opportunities zone. There's hundreds of them across. Uh the state of Florida that you could then go in and add additional funding directed at. Ensuring that prosperity reaches these communities. We have something similar that I've been pushing for and we're now undertaking here in Broward County. And it's, it's prosperity broad where we target a six of the poorest zip codes to put extra resources into these communities. Broward up is built on that where uh Broward College is putting more educational supporting resources into these communities to help these communities. So you got that educational piece. You need to put a friendship programs in these communities, okay? Mentorship program uh for the kids in, in these communities and also for businesses. And then you put some more dollars in to help uh with these smaller companies that are usually located there. Uh in terms of technical support through the SBA, uh lending uh support through the SBA. Uh ensuring you're building capacity so that these companies can hire more people. Entrepreneurship is what has helped this country. Propelled to where it is today. Uh but many communities have been left out of it, especially the black community. Uh we need to make sure we're building on that. And you can also bring money in for healthcare, because if you look at these communities, you find that. You have poor uh outcome uh in terms of healthcare also within these communities. That's something that we can actually. Put more dollars in uh to ensure that uh that's there for, for these communities. And many of these cities. Don't have as much revenue as others. So you wanna make sure your target dollars to help uh strengthen these cities. Uh so that, you know, be, be, not because they, they have a lot of people who are very poor and not enough taxes coming in. That those folks suffer. You can put money into, to alleviate those problems. So that's a big piece of what. Uh you can expect me to, 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 to do. And in terms of criminal justice reform. We need to uh end the prison, the, the, the school to prison pipeline. We ought to not have uh private prisons. Uh you shouldn't be profiting on people's misery, uh which is what the system does and, and perpetuate people staying in. In prison for a long time. Uh when someone has completed their sentence and paid their time and their dues to society, they ought to be made. Whole again. You can't, you, you know, it's, it's wrong. It's, I, I believe on constitutional way to punish somebody for the rest of their life. For a crime that they might have done sixteen, seventeen years old. And now they're forty, fifty years old and they still have a difficult time getting a job. And it can't be hired. Uh I, and that's one of the reasons why many years ago I passed the, uh, the, uh. Act in Broward County that prohibits us uh from uh asking the question as to whether or not you're being arrested or. Uh being incarcerated until you're, we decide that you qualify for the job unless it's in some uh sensitive areas. And then we might wanna take a look closely. So maybe if you're gonna work in security at the airport, we wanna find that out upfront. Uh but we, we, we now have a practice where we don't do that until we look at you carefully to, you don't have, ban the box. You don't have to check the box when you apply for a job at Broward County. Uh not until you qualify for the job. And if we believe uh that there's some issues that we need to look at your background and something comes up. And if it does come up, you get a rebuttal. So you can write, hey, you know, I was sixteen years old. There were ten of us kids out there. Uh doing crazy stuff and unfortunately I got caught up in it. I paid my dues. Here's what I've done with my life since then. Here's where I am. Uh you, you know, I, I deserve this opportunity to, to do this. We actually have money behind that, working with OIC. Organization Industrialization Centers. I don't know if you are familiar with that group. Uh but we have a program where those who are coming out of, or, or jails, uh and I push for that, working with Newton Center. Uh as a part of what I put in place many years ago, the Workforce Investment Program for Broward County, where if you're coming out of jails now. Uh we put you in this program uh where you clean our buses, you service the buses with. Gasoline and, and other things that we need to keep the buses running and on the street. After you complete this program for nine months, you then get a chance to get a government-paid uh, uh job with a pension. Uh and, and I gotta tell you this, I went over uh to, to the bus depot, the depots last uh. Uh Thanksgiving and grown men were in tears. They were getting paid seventeen dollars plus an hour. And they were in tears saying, you know, finally I can take care of my kids and my family. You, you've given us a chance to build, rebuild our life. That's the kind of thing that we must do uh to change the dynamics. And, and, and to ensure that people live into their fullest potential. Uh we can't leave uh our people behind. We can't waste human capital. We must invest in it. And then part of what I've done. Uh through United Negro College Fund, I've been the coach here uh for, going on close to ten years now of the annual event. That is held there in Broward County and was able to raise today one point two million dollars to help. HBCU students who attend, it's mostly HBCU, some that goes to Broward College and some of the other local schools benefit from it also. Uh to get scholarship to finish their education. That's, that's a huge piece of what we must do. Uh technical training and education programs should be available for low to moderate income people. At no cost whatsoever for these four years and for everyone at least a minimum of two years, every American. This is how we're gonna compete with the rest of the world uh to sell more of our goods and our services uh to them. To, so that we can create prosperity for all and, and understand this, Wayne, that. I started off by saying, we might have come here on different boats. From different places, we have different heritages. But we're all in this together now. This, this is our land. This, this is our land, uh, and we must work together in brotherhood and sisterhood to ensure that we're building a better place for all of us. And I'll tell you this, the Congressman endorsed me before his passing, Congressman Alcee Hastings, because he knew that I will be the person who will fight hard to build on his legacy. A legacy of speaking up for those who didn't have a voice, of standing up for fairness and justice, uh, when others wouldn't. I would build on that. And I've worked with him very closely, uh, over the years that I've been in office. Uh, in fact, I still have his endorsement from when I ran in twenty ten, uh, for the County Commission seat. And we worked close, again, very closely together. I'm so grateful for the fact that he would seek to, uh, have me wanted, have, wanted to have me to be successor. I, I, I certainly miss him and, and honor his service to our community for these many, many years that he has served us. Uh, and again, we're all in this together. We can build a better place for all of us if we work together. And I, I'm so grateful that you gave me this opportunity, uh, Wayne, to, to, uh, be open, transparent and speak to your audiences to policies as to where we are and some of the things that we need to look to do going forward. Uh, and, 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 and I'd like to say this to those who are white. Understand this, that because black people and brown people are given opportunities, not taking anything from them. Because if, if we become more prosperous, you become more prosperous also. And you've read that article, Wayne, that says that I help a lot of black folks get contracts, get jobs with the government? Yes, I do. It's only fair that as taxpayers, we share also in the spend from the government. Uh, that I help many blacks get elected across the county? Yes, I do. And I help white folks also get elected. If they have a strong progressive agenda that will move our community forward and they are not reactionary. I, I'm there for them to support them. And in the judicial system, I've helped many, uh, who would ensure that we don't get sentenced twenty percent more than someone who's white for the same crime, which is the fact in the state of Florida. Uh, we, we've got to find a way to really, really understand that we're in this together. And together, we can make our nation a better place for all of us. Thank you.
There you have it. Current Broward County Commissioner Dale B.C. Holness, also con- congressional, U S Congressional Candidate for District Twenty, Congress. Uh, thank you for coming on. Thank you for always being a friend of the Adams Brothers Podcast and I enjoy our conversation. I definitely would like to sit down sometime and just, just, just talk, uh, further about a whole lot of issues, uh, off camera, but.
Thank you, thank you. I, I look forward to that. Uh, you know, my days are very long, but I'll make sure I find some time, whether early, very early in the morning or very late in the evening. Uh, the campaign keeps me really running hard and they say running, it's running. And I'm still a county commissioner, still voting on issues that face us. In fact, at the next county commission meeting, we'll have an agenda item to, uh, rename Eleventh Street in front of Dillard High School to Panther's Lane. Uh, we, we, we have items about, uh, doing business and helping our small business on a constant basis. I'm out there on the frontline for that. And again, thank you so much. Uh, I, I, I love what I do and I love people. Thank you.
And thank you. And, and, and before we leave, when is the election?
So, so that's a very good question and, and you're looking for a date.
Yes.
But the election is not a date. It's not a date. It's a period of time. So the early start of the election is on September eighteenth. The ballots for our military and those living overseas will go out. On September twenty-fourth, the vote by mail ballot will be mailed out. And then we have early voting starting on October thirty, thirty-first, uh, and, and, no, it's not that day. That's October twenty-third. Early voting starts October twenty-third. So you'll be able to go out and vote October thirty-third. But the last day to vote for the primary is November second. And then we'll follow up in January eleventh with a general election. But again, uh, it's a democratic, uh, stronghold. The seat will go to a Democrat and whoever win in November second final vote, which is a final day to vote, uh, will win the election. You can go to Florida Vote, register to vote florida.gov, register to vote florida.gov and register to vote, change your party affiliation or get a vote by mail ballot. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, County Commissioner Holness, and we look forward to seeing you when you're elected, uh, back on the Adams Brothers Podcast. And promise us you're gonna come back once you're elected to talk to the people at least, uh, once a year, once or twice a year.
Absolutely. Let me, let me do something even more. I will invite you to come to Washington, should I get elected, to do your podcast from there. And I, I'd like for you to come, uh, during the session for the Congressional Black Caucus. It is really, if you have not been, it's a powerful place to be, uh, in September. Uh, you go up there, you'll, you'll, you'll see folks from all over the country, all over the world engaging in how we build a better community.
And I'll take you up on that and if our schedule works right, we'll be right there to take you up on that. Thank you again and you have a great evening.
You too, thank you.